We are starting in 15 seconds. She can sit down in that seat. We're gonna start. I didn't realize she was still there. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. We have, it looks like we have a great crew here. I'm so excited to see all of y'all. And as you can tell, we are still, we're still moving around here. We have a computer problem over here, but, but we're good? Okay, we're good to go. So, we want to welcome all of you to the meeting. Today is Tuesday, October 10th, 2023, and we've got some exciting events going on here today. Board members are attending. All of us are here in person, except for Member Gould, who's not going to be able to join us this evening. I want to remind the public that as board members, we won't be engaging in outside electronics, digital communications. In other words, we won't be emailing, so if anybody emails us, they're not going to hear back from us for a little while, but that's okay. We want to be able to focus our time and attention on the business in front of us. Again, thanks for participating. We're gonna begin with a moment of silence, and then we invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And now for the pledge.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some special recognitions that I'm proud to share with you before we take on our business for the evening. Each month, school board members honor an exceptional employee in their district. These employees have shown dedication and contributed to the success of our students. We're grateful for every single one of our hard-working staff members. And this one, and this is one that we are even more pleased to honor here today. I want to invite Member Salamanca, who represents District 2, to tell us about the OCPS staff member she has selected for her school board spotlight.
Thank you, Chair. Just to clarify, so my spotlight couldn't make it today. Something came up very last minute, so I think that we're holding off on my spotlight for a future meeting. Is that correct? That's what we got? Okay, making sure. That's, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. All right, well, we will...
But I'm excited to share it with you all.
Yeah, okay.
From Lake Nona High School. Can't wait to tell you.
Okay, well... Wow, so is this like one of those bumper teasers that the news does? You know, tune in at 5:30?
Tune in for the District 2 Spotlight coming to you soon to another school board meeting.
Okay, thank you. There you go. Good deal. Okay, well, I won't congratulate the person that we're not going to talk about until, until some future time. If you all turn out, you'll see it, or if you tune in, you'll see it. If you don't, you are really going to lose out. For our next recognition, I'd like to recognize Arbor Ridge K-8, Oak Ridge High, and Stone Lakes Elementary for receiving the U.S. Department of Education's 2023 Green Ribbon Schools Award in Washington, D.C. in August. Just to make sure, is Arbor Ridge K-8 here? Are they in the house? Great. Is Oak Ridge High in the house? Yes. And is Stone Lakes Elementary in the house? Yay! Okay. All right, no more teasers. We're about to begin. Now, I just, I want you to understand that winning this award is like no small task. There are only about 700 schools that have been named Green Ribbon Schools since the program began. Now, that's 700 schools in the country. I don't know how many schools there are in the country. I wish I had fact-checked that, but there's a lot. And so, being one of 700 is, is just phenomenal. This award recognizes schools that save energy, reduce costs, feature environmentally sustainable learning spaces, protect health, foster wellness, and offer environmental education that boosts academic achievement and community engagement. All three OCPS schools reach those high standards. In addition, Arbor Ridge was recognized for improving awareness of green topics through its digital newsletter, where they will be publicizing an upcoming special event at our board meeting. Not serious. Oak Ridge, Oak Ridge received the accolade for implementing its shared tables program for uneaten food. I really want to learn more about that, too. And Stone Lakes was honored for its agricultural program that includes growing and caring for crops and livestock. All three of these are just, they're fascinating topics. I really, I'm so proud of these kids. And these are things that are, if you don't watch our board meetings, these are things that this board is really, really passionate about. So, on a personal level, we are so grateful that you all have just thrown yourself into this arena and made such a difference. Now, I'd like to invet, invet, not, invite Environmental Compliance and Sustainability Department's Senior Director, Jennifer Fowler, to the podium to share more information on how these schools are making a positive impact on our environment. Ms. Fowler, you, you have done such a phenomenal job, not just this year, but since you have taken the lead in this area, and we are so fortunate and thankful to have you as a part of our team and leading this initiative.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Our schools make it very easy because they're doing amazing work, so I'm honored to be a part of it. I am excited to recognize the top three award winners of the 2023 U.S. Department of Education Green Ribbon Schools. These schools not only have been recognized as the top three green schools for Orange County Public Schools, but in November of last year, they were designated as Green Apple Schools by the Florida Department of Environmental Protections Green School Designation Program, and then as the Green Ribbon School in April this year. The U.S. Department of Education announced 26 awardees across the country, in which OCPS comprised three of those 26. These schools were also hosted by the Department of Education in a ceremony this past August, where they received their awards and had the opportunity to celebrate with other awardees in Washington, D.C. I would like to introduce the administrators, the teachers, staff, and students who are truly cultivating a culture of sustainability in their schools. From Arbor Ridge School, Principal Vanessa De Mars; our teachers Amanda Ferguson, Donna Hackett Mello, Lisa Kendall, Robin Ballard, and Sean Nagy; our school clerk Linda Call, along with students Kalen McGowan, Spencer Rogers, Everett Rogers, Liam Ferguson, Olivia Ferguson, Elle Kendall, Sophia Rivera, and Christopher Ballard.
Can we get all of y'all to... I was gonna say, can we get, can we get that school to stand, just so we see who you are? Thank you. And don't run off, because when we get done, I want to get each of the schools up here individually so we can get a picture with y'all, okay? Thank you. Okay, back to you, Ms. Fowler.
From Stone Lakes Elementary School, we have Principal Andrew Rollins; teachers Michelle Plank, Tina Santoro, and Jamie Day Alston.
Go ahead, stand.
And from Oak Ridge High School, we have our Assistant Principal Nora Packnick and a teacher, Michelle Gomez, along with the Environmental Science Club, Shirin Khan, Ayesha Anchetta, John Lee, Tiffany Nguyen, Quinn Lee, and Cheyenne Peoples.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, let's, let's see if we can get Arbor Ridge K-8 up here first. Yeah, and go ahead and bring your certificates. Okay, let's get Oak Ridge High up here.
The ridge, yes.
Oh, yeah, Arbor Ridge was the first one.
Congratulations, you guys.
Good, green people in the middle. Good, good ball. Amazing, perfect, up over here. Oh, did you get that? I'm sorry, I was fast. You could go a little bit long, but hang out.
You weren't on.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, good job.
All right, everybody in. Ms. Fowler, you're ordered to the front. Bring your team, bring your team. All right, Frank, what do we need to do? All right, Jennifer, thank you again. At our last board meeting, some of you may have been here or may remember, I got all fired up about football season. Got a little ahead of myself, maybe. So, my school, where all my kids went, Olympia High School, I mean, they are awesome. The Titans are awesome. I am so proud of them, that I decided that they were gonna take on Member Bird's School, Apopka High. Now, everybody knows the Blue Daughters have a reputation for winning, but it was close. It was 23 to 26. And I think, with the handicap we were entitled to, that technically, we won.
Yeah, that's not how it works, but... Nice try, though.
No, okay.
They, they did do amazing, I will tell you. And, and actually, I really need to kind of paint a picture for you all, because you have to understand, there are people, diehard Apopka, Blue Daughter fans, that have said this was the best game in 60 years of Apopka football. That's how good this game was, right?
Yeah.
So, I'm gonna paint a little picture for you. Olympia scored a touchdown with a two-point conversion with 2 minutes and 51 seconds left in the fourth quarter, so they were up 23-22. That's where we were at, right? And then Hayden Kozicki, I believe is how you pronounce his name. Is that right, John? Kozicki?
Kozicki, I went to high school with his mother, so...
There we go, Kozicki.
By the way, I went to Apopka, in case anybody was wondering.
In case there was any question. He nails a 42-yard field goal in the final play of the game to lift Apopka to a 25-23 win over Olympia. It was so close. And really, me describing it doesn't even do it justice, so I brought a little clip, just so you could see. And the crowd went wild. That was a very, very exciting game to see this. So, I appreciate the chair allowing this challenge to take place. So, I think we need to get a picture for the...
Yes, and you know, the game was close, but I have to admit, that, that field goal wasn't anywhere close to close. I mean, I mean, I don't know how much further that they could have moved that field goal back, and he still would have nailed it. That was amazing.
I know.
It was amazing. Okay, yeah, come on over.
Thanks.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, yeah. Just for the record, I've heard about this all day.
Yes.
And all weekend.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, so, Member Gould could not be with us tonight, but I've got a note here that she has sent us a message.
Good evening, my fellow board members and Chair Jacobs. I am so sorry I didn't get to see you wearing the Apopka, white and blue, tonight. But I think it's time for more of the board to get in on this challenge. West Orange High, the Warriors, will be playing Dr. Phillips High, the Panthers, on October 20th, in the Legacy Orange Crate Game. Dr. Phillips holds a special place in my heart, as it was built as a relief school for West Orange High School. I will always, always love my Panthers, but it is time to show off the Warriors, the original West Orange High. I know our team has been working hard this year. In fact, I'm confident that the Warriors will totally tame the Panthers. So, I have a challenge for my friend and board colleague, Ms. Vicky Felder. I can't wait to see you wearing this fantastic jersey on October 24th, when West Orange takes the orange crate. Ms. Felder, will you accept this challenge?
Yes. So now, I've been enjoying seeing all the wearing of the jerseys. I can feel the rivalry, the love this evening, but now I think it's time for more of the board to get in on this challenge. You know, I take sports very, very seriously. If I were a football player, I would be the tight end running straight through the middle. I've been rooting for Dr. Phillips High School since I was a teacher there. RDP, alias Gucci High, actors. The school has produced actors and stars. Let me just give you some game changers. Wayne Brady, Joy Fatone, Alana Miller, Amanda Seals, DJ Callan, Mackia Cox, Johnny Damon, Representative Levon Patrice Bracy Davis, Senator Rep Randolph Bracy, June 3rd, and Kiana Levine Farmer, just to name a few. That's right, Gucci High, the school that OCPS students skip school just to sit and bask in the ambiance that was and is still Dr. Phillips High School. And I am still a big fan. RDP. The Dr. Phillips football team will be challenging West Orange on October 20th in the Orange Crate Game. We ready, we ready. Are y'all ready? I'd like to issue this challenge to my board colleague and friend Pamela Gould. Get your jersey, and listen, I got it right here. It won't fit, but I got it. Here it is. Right here. So now, I want you to know that when we win this game, Board Member Gould, you will be wearing this jersey, RDP, Gucci High.
Whoa. All right now, well, you know, that's not the only school with a big game coming up. We have Colonial taking, right there, right there, taking on University on October 26th for the big battle for the boot. So, you know, I'm just saying, I didn't, here's, here's the funny thing. Colonial's here with the mascot today. I was escorted down, and, and to be fair, I know there's gonna be a whole conspiracy theory, but Angie, I did not know Colonial was gonna be here today. It just happened to land on student advisory for Dr. Vasquez today.
Oh, wow.
But I'm not mad, and I think that means good luck for us to battle for the boot. So, Principal Russo's here, I got the Grenadiers here, and our actual mascot is here today.
Oh, boy.
With all due respect, Member Salamanca, what makes you think that University High is gonna lose this game? You know, University has a very special place in my heart for a couple of reasons. Number one, see, I can't even talk smack as Colonial's here. Like, this is so not fair. Like, I can't look at these kids and be mean towards this school. And I'm a very competitive person, so I take people down on my way out when it comes to football. Like, I make shit, I smack talk.
And principal's here.
And the principal's here, so I can't, I have to be, I have to be nice, because we teach kindness to students. So, I'm gonna be kind, but a couple things. University rocks. It's the best school out there. In District 1, we get things done, number one. Number two, you know why I know University's gonna win? Fun fact, University has the same colors that my high school had when I went to high school, which was O'Gallie High School, so the blue and the gold. So, I will put my money on the University Cougars. Go Cougars. The University Cougars and the blue and gold any day of the week, and I have full confidence that we will prevail in this game, and I'm excited to see you in blue and gold. I did hear blue's your favorite color.
It's actually, you know, it's not. It's orange. But that's a different story. But, November 14th, board meeting. This is what you're gonna be wearing, Member Gallo, right here. It's gonna look so nice on you. We're all... It's gonna look so nice on you, we're all gonna be here, the students will come back.
I will be prepared. I think, I think I'm gonna invite, because you know what Colonial doesn't have that University does, twirlers. Majorettes, I think I'm gonna see if the majorettes can't come down their little sparkly uniforms, and when we win, maybe they can do a little number, and maybe Member Salamanca could like get a hold of a baton and see, see how she is with some tricks on the baton. And this very beautiful jersey.
I don't think so.
Oh my gosh! Can we do fire baton?
I think, I think the fire marshal would have an issue, but can we all feel the rivalry love up here? Wow!
November 14th, they'll be back to see Member Gallo dress like a grenadier, and no pressure, principals.
Member Salamanca in blue and gold. And a baton.
While they're still talking, can we get a picture of the two of them?
Yes. Principal Russo, I cannot baton, please.
Now it's a competition, who can raise theirs higher? You missed it.
Never wanna put District 2 against District 1.
I know.
Thank you, Dr. Vasquez, for having Colonial come out and support me today. I really, I appreciate the layup.
A little heads up would've been nice. I feel like there was... I'm bringing twirlers.
I am questioning whether there's a little foul play here. So, I would normally stay neutral, and I'm not on a winning streak, but very close. But I'm gonna go with the underdog, because I always go with the underdog, so...
You're a Colonial.
Well, I will tell you after the game is over.
Look at the, look at the students.
Chair Jacobs.
Oh, not fair. I didn't mean it, I'm sure you guys will play a great game.
Okay. Next, I'm trying to figure out, should I let these good people go? Or, let's hear the announcement of your new administrators, and then we will, we will allow them to go. Or let them stay, of course, if they wanna sit through the board meeting.
I am very pleased to announce that Mr. Sean Rainey, instructional coach at West Ridge Middle School, is going to be the new assistant principal at West Ridge Middle School. Congratulations.
Thank you, scoreboard members, Dr. Vasquez and staff, for this opportunity to serve at West Ridge Middle School. First, I would like to thank my principal, Nicole Jefferson. She's actually been my principal for the last nine years. I start, so, in my time as an instructional employee, always give me different leadership roles to advance my craft and give me all these opportunities to grow and advance in the educational field. All my different assistant principals, I'm not gonna name them all, but just taking different things and the time you guys took to help me learn how to do your job, and when I would ask all these questions, what's it actually mean to be a leader at the school? To members of my former Civics PLC who are watching, thank you guys for everything. To my family and friends in Jersey who are watching, so thank you guys so much. And Ms. Cress for coming, she's been our media specialist and my unofficial therapist. So, thank you guys for this opportunity.
Alright, I actually am gonna wanna, I don't watch many of the meetings over again, but I'm gonna have to watch your opening comments, because I'm pretty certain that you referred to us as scoreboard members. Did you, did you, did you hear it? I heard scoreboard, I'm not making this up. I'm not making this up, I'm gonna back and watch. It came out, scoreboard, so. Superintendent, do you have any other recognitions?
No, that is it for this evening. Congratulations again, we're so excited that you have joined the administrative ranks.
Okay. Alright, on that note, this is your opportunity, if you all want to leave, you're welcome to go. If you wanna stay, you're welcome to stay. They're all trying to figure this out.
Uh oh, he needs a picture.
Oh yes, picture! We can't forget the picture!
I know, I know.
Congratulations!
Yes, congratulations.
Come on, Chair.
I did win fantasy football.
I'm one week, week four? Week five? So, Deborah won, and it's in my car, and I keep bringing it. Alright, the scoreboard's ready.
So not fair! So not fair!
Congratulations!
Are those more grenadiers coming in?
Oh my gosh.
Wow.
Oh my gosh. Are we getting a cheer? It'd be nice. I mean, yeah.
I mentioned baton, twirlers, and now I'm seeing grenadier cheerleaders?
Oh really? This is like, right? Ooh boy, what smackdown.
District 2 really showing up today.
Officially on the record, I had no idea that Colonial was going to be so well represented for the challenge. And so I think the cheerleaders are here to share their enthusiasm and support for their team as they are taking on University.
I'm sorry you missed the previous little sum, but it was fun, and we're gonna get that boot this year, right? Yes, we are.
Yes! Do y'all have a cheer?
Do y'all have a cheer?
Do y'all have a cheer?
Come on up here and do a cheer. Is she looking for a cheer, Coach?
Like me? Like me? Yeah, definitely.
I did. John, you're so correct. This is a huge conspiracy.
Oh my God, I love this, Maria. Salamonica, look at you. Oh my God.
Did Dr. Williams do this? The Dr. Williams did this to me?
Oh, oh. They so stacked the deck.
Richard, excuse me while I get the knife out of my back.
This is wonderful.
Yes, we are. Are you proud to be a grenadier?
Alright!
We are. Are you proud to be a grenadier? We are. Are you proud to be a grenadier? We are.
This, this just keeps getting better.
Woo boy. Okay. Whoa.
Three, you forgot the van?
Awesome, okay. Woo boy! Alright, great job, ladies, great job. Whoa. Alright, next, we're going to hear from our district associations and our student council advisor, the superintendent's advisory committee. So let me call first on Clinton McCracken, President of the Orange County Classroom Teachers Association. Clinton. Welcome.
Thank you.
Beat that, right?
Good evening, Chair Jacobs, members of the board, and Dr. Vasquez. Thanks for having me here today to share our comments from CTA. Today I was able to visit two schools with Dr. Vasquez. Last week I was able to visit one with Dr. Williams. Last year I asked if Dr. Vasquez would visit some of our schools with me to hear from teachers and administrators directly, to see how things are going, both positive and negative, and how we might be able to work together to make things better. We've had some great conversations at each of these schools we visited, including those today. One of the common concerns I'm hearing from our teachers this year, in addition to pay, of course, relates to school culture and the workload. We keep hearing so much about this that I created an anonymous form for people to tell us what's really happening. I let them know that I'll send the concerns to the district and the board, and I'll continue to advocate for changes with how some teachers are being treated in our district. But today I wanted to share some of the positives that were submitted in this form as well. I know I can't mention names here, so I'll send a follow-up email to you all with the names and the schools. The first one, the principal is probably the most supportive admin I have ever worked with. She really listens when you go to her with concern, and is receptive to solutions that you offer. She provides opportunities for growth and wants to see her staff thrive. And another, the principal is fabulous. She listens to her teachers, allows us to be professionals, and provides excellent feedback. She truly makes our school feel like a family. And another, the principal is one of the most caring, personable, and thoughtful leaders' bosses I've ever had. He trusts his team. He doesn't micromanage. He goes out of his way to let us know he is always here for us. And another, the principal is very helpful and consistent. He always tries his best to get what you need, to get you what you need. He has a lot on his plate, but always manages to say hello, and he is great with the kids. And another, the principal is doing a great job communicating with families and supporting teachers. She is focused on student engagement and helping all students succeed. When I hear about problems and working conditions at other schools, I feel very grateful for her leadership. These are just a few. We've received a lot of comments in this forum so far. As I mentioned, I'll send the concerns your way, but I wanted to highlight here what is possible when principals build a positive culture at their schools and with their teachers. The atmosphere of any workplace, the culture you experience when you walk through the doors, and how happy people are with their work when they go home each night, is predictive of whether people stick around there for the long haul. Thank you to our principals who are creating schools with a positive culture.
Thank you, Clinton, and thank you. And before we move on, you're so right about culture, and in an organization this large, with so many different schools, without principals on board creating that culture school by school, it's just not possible. But I also, I just wanna give a shout out to our superintendent, that she has worked so hard in the first year she's been in office to try to change that culture. So, working together, working with you, working with our principals, and working with our students, and all of our wonderful teachers, we can get there. So thank you. Alright, Dr. Vasquez.
Clinton, just wait one minute. I do wanna give a shout out to Clinton. It was his idea that we go out and visit schools together and really show that we really are trying to work together, not against one another. And in some schools, there is a culture of us against them. And so as we visit schools, we're hearing concerns, but we're also seeing some bright spots, and we're seeing what an impact the leadership at the school level can have on that culture in a school. And so when we walk in and they are receptive, and you can feel that sense of belonging, and that they can honestly share things that are of concern and some things that are going well, it goes a long way in giving me hope that every day, we're making a difference and we're changing that culture. So thank you for being bold enough to bring that idea forth.
And we look forward to your feedback when you have it to share with us. Thank you. Alright, next, I would like to hear from Ron Pollard, President of the Orange Education Support Professionals Association. Mr. Pollard, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. Thank you for wearing that jersey. I also am alumni of Apopka High School. 1975, before Melissa you were born.
Oh, that's right. I was gonna say, that's a very familiar year to me, I heard what you said. But now, I forgot, we exchanged ages the other day. He thought he was, he was gonna prove how old he was.
Close.
And I got him by, how many months was that? I think it was four.
Just a few months.
Just a few months.
Not very much. Ron Pollard, I'm president of Orange County, Orange Education Support Professionals Association. And to you all, I wanna give a shout out to Dr. Vasquez. I participated this morning in a advisory committee meeting that had a cross-section of our support staff. And I was just proud to be in that meeting to hear them talk about how they felt, some things that they saw. And I'm telling you, kudos to Clinton, my good friend, that we are making an atmosphere of cooperation, and that everybody is to be heard, because we do need everybody. I had read, jumped ahead of myself on the board docs today, and I saw that there was a proclamation that would be made for the bus drivers. I wish I had my bus drivers and monitors here, and I hope they're watching when you do read that proclamation on school bus safety. Protecting our young people is job one. So, thank you for recognizing the good work that all of our support staff do for our OCPS students. So thank you very much. And that number was 98,755 public schools in the US. No, I'm not that smart, I did the fact checking while you were talking.
Wow.
So, anyway, and proud to see all these students here, our young people, that's our future. I love it, I love it. So when you go back to your school, say hello to somebody in your support staff, you know who they are. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Alright, next, on behalf of the Orange County Association of School Administrators, we have Guy Swenson, President, not President, President.
President-elect.
President-elect, thank you.
Greetings, Chair Jacobs, school board members, and Superintendent Vasquez. I am Guy Swenson, President-elect of Ocassa, which represents over 300 school-based leaders. First and foremost, our members applaud the hard work our district continues to do to ensure teachers receive competitive compensation for their pivotal roles in our students' education. A classroom led by a highly qualified teacher... A classroom led by a highly qualified teacher is the best path forward towards student success, and they deserve competitive pay for their unique roles. It is important to our OCASSA members for the board to understand that it is a well-known feeling among us that the topic of our fair and competitive compensation for administrators only comes after teacher and classified compensation has been settled. Think for a moment the message that is received by our members when the discussion of our compensation truly comes last. Administrators and teachers are a team who support each other and work side by side for the betterment of our students and community, yet we have unique responsibilities that deserve equal consideration. Our school-based leaders shoulder the responsibility of everything that happens in and outside of the school, during school hours, after-school hours, and on weekends. A principal's job is truly seven days a week, 24 hours a day. This is why we sleep with our cell phones near our beds, check for urgent messages first thing in the morning, and the last thing we do before we go to bed. The role of school safety has grown exponentially in the last few years. Much of our often 12-hour workday is spent being the educational leaders that we want and need to be by mentoring teachers, conferencing with families, and ensuring standards-based instruction throughout the campus. In addition, we still have to weave in attending to safety and security, ensuring supervision, checking for propped open doors, monitoring bathrooms, parking lots, gates, cameras, gaggle alerts, fortify alerts, and staying ahead of discipline, just to name a few. The support we give our teachers is outside of the classroom so that their classroom can remain the haven of learning and educational sacred space that it truly is. All of our roles on our campuses are equally important, and as Dr. Armbruster has instilled in us, we are one OCPS. As such, we ask that our compensation be considered on its own merits in concert with classified and instructional compensation. Board members, we earnestly request your continued recognition that the role of the school administrator warrants compensation that aligns with the unique demands of the position. By doing so, you honor our unwavering dedication and ensure that our schools are led by the best and brightest in the field of educational leadership. Our members, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you so much. Dr. Kestner Denon, you want to be recognized?
Yes, Madam Chair. I just want to recognize the change in the room today. Culture, it's hard to define. It's hard to observe, but you feel it, and you recognize it when you're among it. And this meeting, there's so much positive and so much cooperation and grace. I've never heard someone from OCASSA come up and say, "Please look out for our teachers first." That, that is powerful. And for Clinton to talk about how he went with the superintendent to listen to teachers together, that is a powerful statement, coming in together, that we're working together. It's not us versus them. And then to have our students here and all the members up here cutting up and having some fun, it's just, there's, something has changed. So I appreciate that, Dr. Vasquez. I attribute that to your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Kestner Denon. Member Felder? That's okay. You're not anymore. Okay. Okay, well, now, not to put down our previous speakers, but I'm pretty excited because I think this is the first time that our school advisory, no, it's the second time, second time that we've had members of the superintendent's school advisory council attending. So would you introduce your guests?
I most certainly will. And again, this was not planned. Colonial was selected to come and speak. There's representatives from the school, their student advisory council, but there was no intent of this rivalry. I just want to put it out there. If anyone is to blame, I would probably say it might be the chief of high schools who was the former principal at Colonial High School. I don't know. So I, so I am just thrilled to be able to introduce a few members from Colonial High School who are part of my student advisory council. And I appreciate the time that they take to sit with me and some members of my team and talk about some of the issues that are impacting our students. And so I'd like to introduce Kaylee Marine, Yarieli Valentine, Jaden Gonzalez, and Nicholas Rose from Colonial High School. If you'll come up.
During our last superintendent's advisory meeting, we discussed some issues that our school was facing this year and came up with solutions. We have had a lot more participation throughout past years, but this year's student body participation has declined. This new phone policy has affected the decrease of peers not participating in campus activities.
The solution we devised is to incorporate interactive lunch games along with a spirit week that would gain students' interest. As our homecoming season just finished, we saw many students dress up for our fun-filled days. We hope to receive the same reaction when creating a new spirit week.
Our advertising would consist of social media posts as well as announcements on the intercom and campus. We would have SGA members make posters to place around campus. These activities would be incorporated into our winter spirit week held in December right before winter break. We also hope to have staff and faculty participation because encouragement is key.
Students will dress up according to designated days and engage in fun games during lunchtime. Our days would include stuffed animal day or snowball fight day. These days would be joined with an activity during lunch, such as a fun game of cornhole or trivia questions. Prizes would be given to students who win lunch games. Since we want students to engage, these prizes would include things many students are interested in, such as croc charms.
We would like to thank our school board member, the Honorable Ms. Salamanca, the High School Division, and Mrs. Russo for all their support. I'd also like to recognize our advisor, Ms. Torres, because none of this would be possible without them.
Thanks to our Colonial High School representatives, our CHS cheerleaders, Hispanic Honor Society, and Ag students.
It's great to be a Grenadier.
Make sure you're not blocking anybody. You can squat if you'd like. Hold on, first one, just to make sure I know what I'm doing. Okay, and it's great to be a Grenadier on three. One, two, three.
It's great to be a Grenadier.
I'm not buying it. One more time. And with those pom-pom thingies.
It's great to be a Grenadier.
Perfect.
Member Salamanca?
Thank you Chair. I couldn't have planned this better myself. There will be years of conspiracy around this, and you know, I'm gonna look at Jose as well and the high school team back there. But I just want to say thank you all so much for coming and just having all of you, different organizations represented, supporting your peers as they provide. The purpose of the discussions and the topics you heard was for us to give the different leaders in our entire district an opportunity to talk to us, school board members who are elected at the ballot box, just an understanding of what's going on from the teacher's perspective, the principal's perspective, as well as the students' perspective.
And our classified employees' perspective.
Yeah, and our support staff as well. So we provide now this time and space during every school board meeting to hear from you and the student advisory council that talks to Dr. Vasquez about the student perspective. This is your chance to, to kind of elevate what's going on in schools and how you are all feeling. This board cares deeply about students feeling connected to their schools. This is a really core priority for us, for Dr. Vasquez, and it has been and will continue to be. And that means we do want to hear from you, and we do want to know what that experience is. When you think about this entire district, what are we, 250 maybe? What's our number of students? 210,000, 210,000 students. It's a massive budget, couple billion dollars. This whole system is made for you all to succeed, right? The whole purpose of the education system is for you all to be set up, to be engaged and involved in a really productive way in society. So it's really great to have you all. I'm also very proud Grenadier, just to see you all here representing each other and Principal Russo. I'm such a fan of Colonial and the work that is happening there and the culture shift as well that you're feeling, and such an amazing school. So we, as a board, just want to thank you for being here. I'm so proud to represent you. I represent you guys and Lake Nona High School, and then eventually a new high school. And I am so grateful every day when I get to speak to all of you and to your families. And so I'm very happy. I'm Colombiana, so also very nice to see the history, the, just the representation on this room and how much that is core to Colonial. I represent that too. So just know that you have my voice up here, hopefully speaking and representing you. And if I'm not, just shoot me an email. It's public, and just let me know what you think.
Well said. Thank you, Member Salamanca. We have several proclamations, and when we finish our proclamations, I'll invite you all to leave if you want to or stay if you want to. First, we are proclaiming October 16th, 2023 as White Kane Awareness Day in Orange County Public Schools. We're proclaiming October 15th through the 21st as America's Safe Schools Week in Orange County Public Schools. And I'm gonna ask Sergeant Robert Bowe-Bay with, pardon me? So much for, yes, thank you. No, it wasn't Bowe-Bay. Thank you.
Good evening Board, Chair, Vice Chair, Superintendent. It's my honor this evening to read the proclamation for American Safe Schools Week. I am your internal school resource officer for Acceleration East High School. I'd be remiss if I didn't give a shout out to the professional educational staff and also the support staff of Acceleration East. They do a phenomenal job. So the American Safe Schools Week is October 15th through the 21st of 2023, whereas the National School Safety Center has established October 15th through the 21st, 2023, as American Safe Schools Week, and whereas excellence in education is dependent on safe, secure, and peaceful school settings, and whereas a positive climate and safe environment is an established objective within the district's strategic plan, and whereas prevention and early intervention strategies are used by the district to reduce the occurrence of disciplinary and security incidents within schools, and whereas the district has implemented a comprehensive school safety strategy based on contemporary prevention and early intervention programs, emergency preparedness practices and training, physical security standards, law enforcement coordination, and visitor management. And whereas school safety will remain a core priority for the district, now therefore, the School Board of Orange County, Florida does hereby proclaim October 15th through the 21st, 2023, as American Safe Schools Week in Orange County Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you Sergeant.
Appreciate it.
We are also proclaiming October 16th through the 20th as School Bus Safety Week in Orange County Public Schools. And I'd like to read that proclamation. Whereas yellow school buses are considered the safest vehicles for transporting children who live more than two miles away to and from school according to state and national data, and whereas the Florida Department of Education, Highway Safety and Motor Vehicles, OCPS Transportation Services, Law Enforcement Agencies, and other organizations are committed to providing a safe, crash-free environment. And whereas during a normal school year, OCPS transports more than 69,000 students approximately 95,000 miles daily. Last school year, more than 55,000 OCPS school bus riders were transported approximately 73,910 miles daily. Whereas the exemplary safety performance of nearly 550 bus operators is observed every day on the roads of Orange County by motorists and student riders. Whereas while on school buses, students have the right to be safe from physical and emotional attack and any form of behavior that is threatening, harassing, or abusive. And whereas motorists are responsible for following all traffic laws to ensure the safety of everyone on the school bus, and whereas successful safety measures have been implemented as the result of the collective effort of Florida's state and local safety partners, along with national, state, and community organizations. Whereas state and local agencies and organizations are encouraged to support activities to promote the health and safety of schoolchildren during School Bus Safety Week and throughout the school year. Now therefore, the School Board of Orange County, Florida encourages everyone to consider the safety and health of children every day and does hereby proclaim the week of October 16th through the 20th as School Bus Safety Week in Orange County Public Schools. And we are also proclaiming October 26th as Lights On After School Day in Orange County Public Schools. October 23rd through the 31st as Red Ribbon, I always struggle with that, Red Ribbon Week in Orange County Public Schools. And that concludes, I'm sorry? Oh, definitely. Can we get Officer Bowe-Bay, can you come up? And can we get all of our law enforcement in the room together for a picture? Thank you.
Oh, I guess I'll leave this on.
Yeah, you have to. I think that's the deal.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the bet. You lost.
Yeah, but for this picture. I think it's apropos. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Very long, long school board meetings.
I know.
Will you take the mic for a minute? So we have students here and I thought they may be wondering why we have a dog here. They may know, they're a lot smarter and I give them credit for it, but still, we're really proud of Coco. So could you give us a little introduction?
Yes, it's Coco. She's a part of the weapon screening team. So we go out randomly from school to school every day looking for weapons.
And when, and when she's not out at schools, I see her up in Chief Holmes' office.
Yes.
And, yes. Yes, throwing balls up and down the office. Yes, so it's not all, it's not all hard work and there is some fun and games. So anyway, thank you so much.
No problem. Thank you. Yes, I know, I know.
I know.
They're vertically challenged, I know.
Okay. So, all right, we're about to get into the business portion of our meeting. Again, as I said, we'd love to have you all stay, but we also want to give you the opportunity if you want to head out, you're welcome to do that as well.
Thank you.
Did you do all the other proclamations?
Yeah.
You did, but you stopped at safety.
Uh, I did Red Ribbon Week. Yeah, I did because I couldn't say Red Ribbon.
All right, Dr. Vasquez, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Madam Chair, there are no changes to the agenda.
All right, thank you. With no changes, I'll open the floor for a motion to adopt the agenda as posted. Motion by, I don't know why that sounded like further away. Member Vice Chair, is there a second? Second by Member Castor Dental. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with all members present voting in the affirmative. Moving on to public, do we have any speakers here for?
No, Madam Chair, we have not received any yellow cards. Can I ask you one more time, who motioned? We missed them.
Yes, the Vice Chair made a motion and Member Castor Dental made the second.
Second.
All right, so we have no, no public comments, no public hearing. I'll move on to the consent agenda. Any questions or concerns by board members? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. All right, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Member Castor Dental. Second by Member Byrd. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with all members present voting in the affirmative. Non-agenda public comment time, period. Do we have speakers for non-agenda public comment?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have 10 speakers.
Okay. 10 speakers, so 10 speakers, we should be able to hear from everyone. How nice, okay, wonderful. So speakers each have three minutes. There are a few guidelines. How many people, who has not been here that wants to speak today that hasn't been here before? Okay, I'll go through them.
The Second Annual School Spirit Run powered by Delta Dental is officially in the books. With nearly 2,000 participants, there was no shortage of spirit. As students, teachers, staff, family members, friends, and even mascots made their way around SeaWorld Orlando to support their schools. For one OCPS family, it was much more than just a race.
When she crossed that finish line, it was, wow, you just did a race. With your school, you're a kindergartner. Oh my goodness, girl, you did it.
An early milestone, the Sanises worried wouldn't come.
Bridget didn't learn to walk until two weeks after she turned three years old. She was born with Prader-Willi syndrome and part of that is low tone. And so she struggles with gross motor, fine motor, speech, all of that.
Bridget was determined to run the kids' race with a little help from her PE coach.
She went, walked right up to him and just said, you know, Coach A, will you run the race with me?
So I was actually very honored to be able to run the race with Bridget. It actually felt special that she came and you know, she asked me. As we're about to get ready to the race, she looks at me, she looks up at me, she goes, Coach A, just throws my hand out of the way. She goes, I got this.
You know, big smile as she crossed the finish line and knowing that she did it.
The Foundation for OCPS decided to make that smile shine a little brighter. On behalf of the Foundation, I wanted to give you this very special Glow in the Dark Medal, right? Can I put it on you? And this is for finishing the kids' school spirit run.
I love that OCPS can, you know, be there for these kids who have some extra needs, some special needs, that they can make sure that they all get to experience that inclusiveness, that they are not pushed aside, and that they get to share the same experiences as all of their peers.
An unforgettable experience for a strong kindergartner who is ready to take on the world.
We say my name is Bridget and I can do anything.
I am just glad to be part of it, you know, being able to help as much as I can for her to like succeed.
We are so grateful for, you know, this run and for the Foundation for giving us those opportunities.
In Orange County, if you want to focus on a career in cooking, or perhaps medicine, or business, well then, there's a program for you.
Magnet programs are designed to promote or investigate talents and interests of our students here in the district.
There are 46 magnet programs that exist inside Orange County schools and three standalone magnet schools totaling more than 7,000 students. The idea is to entice them by focusing on what they're most interested in doing.
The goal for any magnet school or program is to provide something special for students in our district. It's a wonderful way to investigate your talents, to see what your interests are, and to really try on a career.
But this isn't always a career path, and that's okay, because it's still a road to learning.
But what you are doing is seeing if what you believe you want to do is really going to fit you. Do you love it? We hope you do. But if you don't, well then, we're going to help you maybe with even another program.
The deadline to apply for a magnet program is coming up soon, February 15th. There are currently 4,000 applicants, but no preference is given to when you apply. The district says, just like the programs offered, come see the drawing power of a magnet program.
I would say check us out, know what we're all about, know that there's opportunity out there, there's choice out there, that you can go visit the schools, talk to the personnel, you can come to our website and see our virtual magnet fair going on right now. Check us out and see, I bet you'll find some things there for you.
At Orange Center Elementary, students in the coding and robotics club aren't just working in robotics, but in Legos.
This is the first time we've ever done anything with Legos. They had a little bit of experience with coding last year, but really, they never were able to make something move with the computer.
That all changed when Disney stepped in and donated more than $100,000 to Orange Center Elementary to enhance their STEM programs and provide first LEGO League programming for students at the school through 2026.
Through our partnership with Disney, they were able to give us this sponsorship where we were able to work with the hubs and open up the first LEGO League Robotics, the program, and really make them be able to build and create things that work and complete designs that they want them to complete.
And the students went to work building all kinds of cool stuff. A solar-powered car with a panel rotates to soak up the sun, even a water-powered hydroelectric generator. Pretty impressive considering these are elementary school students, but what they lacked in years, they made up with teamwork.
We all have to work together and always respect each other and help whoever needs help.
And with that spirit coded into them, the students went to a qualifying competition against 17 other teams from across Central Florida. They were by far some of the youngest competitors going up against mostly middle schoolers.
I thought we were going to lose because if you would have stopped and pissed the kids at the competition, I was like, oh my God, we're going to lose.
But these budding builders won the award for Best Robot Design and will compete in the Central Florida Regional Championship on February 11th. Now, the pressure is on to build, rebuild, and sometimes just start all over.
When you fail, that means you can improve your work and make it much better.
And if you can't tell, this is about much more than assembling robots, it's about putting together the building blocks of a child. Oh, and if you ask these competitors, it's also about winning.
It felt awesome because we got to prove to other kids that we can do things too.
At Audubon Park K8 School, teachers are literally taking a deep dive into education.
What a better way to kick off the week than to bring in a new cool exhibit in our library?
And this is the new library exhibit you'll want to check out, two black diamond stingrays. Oh, and they're brothers if you can't tell.
They're freshwater, they're very hardy animals, so one of the most hardiest. So I figured with 1,200 kids probably putting their fingers in the tank, these would be the best to start with.
Kelly Roberts believes teaching needs to be much more than books and worksheets. The school already has lots of other animals, a sand boa, tiger salamanders, axolotls, tarantulas, and alligators, but apparently, they were missing something. So Roberts reached out to the Center for Stingray Biology in New York.
She sent me an email, a beautiful email, explaining to me what she was doing here at the school, okay? And I was really impressed with what she was doing. She actually wanted to buy the stingray, but after I heard what she was doing here, I wanted to be a part of this and I offered to donate the race to her.
Roberts even flew the biologist down to teach the students about the rays. For the scientists, these animals are a lesson in more than biology.
Keeping pets is, I think, a responsibility and it's a good way to teach the kids that responsibility. Get them to clean their room, not so easy, but get them to take care of an animal, completely different because they're so invested in it.
The students have already learned their school is unique.
A bunch of schools don't really get to have animals and Audubon Park, this is really one of the schools that gets to do that and it's just cool to be able to learn about them in person.
And for Roberts, well, the best part of her day is the moment she comes to work.
But it's so worth it when the kids come in at 8:15 and their faces are pressed against the tanks and they're just excited to be in school. And if this is one little thing that will help them enjoy school, then I'll do anything to make it happen.
It's a really nice outlet, especially composing. It's a great art form. I like it a lot. My experience is not, it's not the average teenager experience.
When the doctor told me, if you don't do the treatment, you're going to be here for only four months because I got cancer. I got brain cancer, it's the third time that I get it.
Not every nine-year-old has to see their mom lose hair and the whole process, so I was a lot closer with my mom than most other boys.
Yeah, well, John started virtual school and I think it was the best thing that I could have ever done for him. I called Ms. Gurley and I said, I don't think I'm going to be here for the graduation, which is in May, is there any way that you could send it home?
And so then my assistant principal immediately, we got on it, she said, okay, let's, let's, let's do this. I said, she actually said, well, can we do something for him?
And these ladies, my God, a whole thing started. I didn't even know what's happening. It was like emails back and forth.
We wanted to make this as memorable as we possibly could, from balloons to pomp and circumstance, to words of encouragement, to actually having the photographer there to take the pictures.
It was amazing. I'm really grateful that this was able to happen. I would never thought of something could be possible like that, for them to come here, bring balloons, giant 23 balloons, the cap and gown, the diploma and everything, it was awesome. I wasn't even sure if she was going to get to see me graduate at all, so I was really stressed and worried about that. But now that she got to see me graduate, you know, we celebrated, we had a cake, it was, it was nice. It was like a weight taken off my chest.
I have never experienced anything like it in my life. People that I have never seen in my, before, I've never seen these people before, they became like family.
After I had finished talking, Ms. Ray, she held on to my hand, she squeezed my hand really hard, and she looked at me and she said, Mrs. Gurley, now I can die happy.
To summarize, she, she gave me strength because even when she was in a hospital bed or whatever, she was always smiling, she was always trying to cheer me up, always trying to let me know that everything's going to be okay. So she is pretty much the main reason why I'm able to continue and persevere and I guess have hope.
My name is Watson Hewitt and I'm a senior at Winter Park High School. I would describe myself as a very curious person. I just really like to do everything that I can. I'm in student government, I really love computers, I started this tech refurbishment club at my school, and I also play football. And then I'm in IB, that community of just doing something together as a team, whether that's the orchestra or like the offensive line. It's also a part of me that's just like, that loves the challenge of it. I feel like when I'm really pushing myself, that's when I'm growing. And when I'm growing, I just feel like I'm the most happiest. I'm currently the student body president and I've done student government since like sixth grade. So it's really always been a big part of my life, always liked the ability to make a change within the school. People always said it's like the jack of all trades, the master of none, but then people always forget the second phrase, like, but better than the master of one. I just have always had this approach where I just want to do a little bit of everything. Really, Winter Park has just offered it all for me, just so many different communities I can be a part of, whether it's student government, or orchestra, or football, like it's, they're all there and everyone's just very collaborative and supportive of each other. Definitely my parents, they've always driven me just to be the best person I possibly can be and just really try everything. Next for me is University of Florida. I'm looking into double majoring in finance and computer science there.
Hi, my name is Zintan and I am a senior at Acceleration East High School. I'm from Malaysia and I moved here about six years ago. There's a lot of doors for you to open and if one closes, just open another one. I am in door enrollment and after high school, I'll just have two more semesters before I get my AA degree and it means a lot to me and my family because I have four siblings, including me. And for me to be able to lift off some financial burden of my parents and for my siblings, it means a lot. My parents taught me about being humble, first of all, being humble and no matter what, no matter any obstacles that comes, you'll get through it. Ms. Roka, I would like to thank you for helping me when everybody closed the door on me. Ms. Carr, my art teacher, she was there motivating me, really dug out the artist in me. I didn't know I could paint. I want to be a foreign language interpreter and hopefully I can work for the United Nations. I'm an avid lover of languages because I believe that with every language barrier broken, it's more perspectives that's learned. You know, there's a lot of hatred in the world. I believe if you understand each other a little more, peace is possible.
Hi, I'm AJ from University High School. I had a friend who recommended that I take part in the musical at the time, which was Legally Blonde in my sixth grade year in middle school. And ever since then, I just never stopped. I fell in love with it and just wanted to do more, wanted to do better. Honestly, I don't think it's anything Honestly, I don't think it's anything even physical that you can describe. It's just this feeling that something you're able to just exude on the stage and the connection you have with the audience, why do I do it? It's fulfilling, and I think anyone else who is in the arts world or honestly just does what they love can all just say there's a genuine love and passion burning behind it. 100% the entire arts faculty, but if I had to give it to one person, it would definitely be Mr. Mendez. He often saw things in me that I didn't even see in myself and would push me further than I thought I can go. But I'm grateful for what UHS has helped teach me because it's that rigor, it's that integrity, it's that work ethic that otherwise I don't think I would have had, that set me up to succeed in the actual line of work. I want to be able to go through as many doors as I can, or even create my own door. You think about the sacrifice that I made. My grandmother made so many sacrifices. She didn't do it thinking, oh my God, I'm going to be rich, I'm going to do it for me, but she thought about the generations, you know, coming down from her. And I think about what am I doing that could set up not even just the future of my own family, but the future of the world, the people, like what is going on that I can hopefully spread love and good just energy?
Hi, my name is Samaya Russell. I'm a senior at Timber Creek High School. I do social clubs like K-Pop Club, Avenue Club, ASA, and also some service and academic clubs like Premed Club, National Honor Society, as well as Teams United, which is a team-led organization who pass out medicine to elderly and homebound. And then I do sports. Like, for four years, I was in bowling. I was varsity for the girls' team. I want to do a bunch of things so that when I do, like settle down and really get into nitty-gritty of life, I don't have any regrets. The secret to time management is that you have to make sure you plan ahead. You don't want to wait till the very last second to do things. You want it to make sure that you do bite-sized chunks of it so it doesn't seem so daunting. A teacher that's made a big impact in my life has to be Ms. Stevens. She's the biomedical teacher here. She really taught me how to enjoy medicine and look into the why of things, and she's really made me appreciate my strengths. I overcame being bullied because I had to look into myself and find a strength within myself because sometimes you can't rely on everybody else. You have to find what's inside you that makes you special or makes you glow. Specifically, my mom has helped me a lot. She instilled in me being very organized as well as working hard for what you want and not settling for less, and she always instilled in me to be the boss rather than work for one. My advice would be that problems will arise. It's just what comes with life that gives it meaning. I would just say it's not as daunting as it first appears, so get involved, try new things, take risks. My next step is to enroll in UCF in the fall and go into the Honest College my sophomore year in a major in biology. My ultimate dream is to be a physician assistant with a specialty in dermatology.
Hi, I'm Micah Gant, undergraduate leader for Boone High School, over at Custodial Services. I've worked at Boone High School for 16 years. We're here to serve and get the job done. We also have fun while we're doing the job. I love my family here. It's my second family outside of my own. Very good positive attitude, good love, good relationship, so it's a good place to be. From top to bottom, the ladies come in, while the guys are taking the front of the job, they do the dusting. When they finish, the guys go back and we start scrubbing the rooms, getting the rooms ready for the front to be returned back inside. Treat people with respect. If you want respect, you got to give respect to all the... So after this, we go into the gym to start scrubbing and waxing the gym. It's a good feeling to know that we're taking care of the kids and the teacher and the parents, our principals and our APs. So it's important to me to make sure they look good as well for the community. My dad had been in for so long, and I asked about the position, and he told me to apply, and I did, and got a call, and I've been here ever since. I want to make sure I make them proud, like young retired men.
So today, we surprised the teachers and staff at Oak Ridge High School with what we're calling Back to School Dream Boxes. We partnered with a Souls for Souls and a Gift for Teaching, and we selected five local Orlando high schools to benefit from these dream boxes.
It's important for our teachers and staff to feel appreciated, and I think today went above and beyond that expectation of that goal.
Thank you, teachers. Thank you so much.
At the Coach Foundation, we have a mission called Dream It Real that is around creating opportunities and removing barriers for the next generation of young people who have the courage to dream it real. And we know that the next generation's dreams wouldn't be possible without the support that they get from their educators.
It is not a secret that sometimes teachers and educators are a little undervalued, so feeling like the community is realizing that we are important, so it is fantastic to see that they're actually going out there and they're doing their best so that we can feel appreciated and have reasons to keep going and keep doing what we do.
We hope this brightens your day a little bit and gets you off to an amazing school year, so thank you for everything you do. These young people could never achieve their dreams if it wasn't for you.
Riverdale Elementary School, welcome home. 10 months ago, this all happened. Can you believe it? 10 months ago. And those 10 months were everything wrapped up into one, okay? They were hard. They were amazing.
Good morning, welcome.
They were bountiful as far as what it produced in our students and teachers.
So nice to see everybody.
It helped us create new friends that we didn't have before. All these things wrapped up into one thing, and what it reminds me, everybody here, that when bad things happen, and they always happen, good people come together and we make it work, and then good things happen.
Three, two, one. We're back home.
Look how beautiful it looks. So awesome.
I can't wait until these students and these parents walk through those doors and just so they enjoy what I did or what we just saw, and it's going to be so much joy to my heart.
Today was just something we're looking forward to, you know, something we're anticipating, wanting for so long. And we knew this day was going to come, okay? So that's kind of kept us hopeful, and when things got a little testy here and there and people, you know, and it was just rough, we said, it's coming, we're moving home, don't worry.
When you can stand back and watch the smiles on their faces as they're carrying their boxes in and unpacking their boxes, I just walked over to a couple of classrooms, and the teachers are so grateful and so thankful. That's why we do what we do. That's why we work for the district, I mean, to make sure that the students can be in their seats the first day of school and be happy and safe in a clean environment. It's really nothing more important than that to us and facilities.
This is the biggest small district in the nation, and when I say that, and I say it a lot to people when we're talking, is that it's all made up, yeah, there's a lot of us, but it's all made up of people who know each other and have worked together in different capacities over the years. And so when something like this happens, you know, everybody has an educator heart. They just want to help. They just want to reach out and make sure you're okay, and that's what people did.
Hi, my name is Pamela Johnson. I've been a school bus driver with Orange County Public School almost 30 years. We're going to check the bus. We check in all the seat belts and everything, make sure they're correct.
What is your main objective every day here?
Safety. Make sure I get the kids to and from school safe because the parents put them in my hands. I'm their mom now. Dash gauges, I check. Lighting indicators, I check. Fuel gauge, windshield wipers, heaters, steering, two-way radio. All works. Radio is on, tablets is on. Okay, we're going to start driving. We're leaving the compound. My day starts at normally between 4:00, 4:30 in the morning, and it ends like 6:30 in the evening. I have a break in between that normally starts about 10:00 to 1:00. My morning run consists of all E S C kids. All my stops are door-to-door. Normally, through the school year, I'll have like 20, 23 stops. Good morning, Michelle. Michelle, good morning.
Morning, Ms. Pam.
You going to say good morning? Say good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Rocha. Say cheese.
Who's that? Ms. Pam. And is she your favorite?
Favorite? You never know what the kid has been through that night before, so just the kindness and...
We have nothing on the non-consent agenda. We're finished with the consent agenda. I think, Superintendent, we're on to your report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll make it brief. I have started my town hall meetings, and the most recent one was at Dr. Phillips High School. We had a great turnout, and so I invite families, our employees, to look on our website with the published dates. I'd love to have you come out and ask your questions so that you can become more informed and more connected with Orange County Public Schools. Additionally, I do want to remind parents that the end of the marking period is just a few days away, so if you haven't had an opportunity to check if your child has turned in all of their assignments or if they have any missing assignments, tonight might be a good time to do so so that if teachers are giving them any grace period to turn in missing assignments, they can do so before report cards are distributed. That's the end of my report.
All right, thank you. Ms. Enval. Okay, I know we have a report from our legislative chair, Vice Chair, and I'm not sure if any of other committee chairs have a report. If so, we'll hear from you next.
Thank you. My mic tonight, sorry about that. So I just have a brief report. Two weeks ago, we went to, I went to DC on behalf of the, for COSPA, which is the Coalition of School Board Members, to which the Florida School Board Members Association is a part of. And so I sit on the federal committee for FSBA, so I went as a legislative chair in the federal, sitting on that committee. So anyways, we were in DC. We were able to meet with all of our delegation. We met with Senator Scott, Senator Rubio, I met with Congressman Frost, I met with Congressman Soto, I met with Congressman Moskowitz's staff, and there were several others. I think we were able to meet with 2/3 of the Florida delegation. So I just want to share with you what our asks are and kind of share with what is kind of happening federally. The first ask that we asked was, please don't shut down the government, so you're welcome. Because I'm fairly certain that our advocacy led to the government not being shut down. I'm just joking. Go back up. But one of the, one of the two main focus points for us was, number one, in the House budget, they're cutting Title I dollars by 80%. That isn't represented in the Senate budget, so our ask was to please look at the Senate budget, not the House budget, and we had examples of what that would do to our district and other districts if they were to cut the Title I dollars or those title dollars by 80%. It would just be detrimental. It would devastate our county and the good work and the work that we continue to do for our most neediest students. The second one was is that we were asking them to fully fund IDEA with the E S R dollars going away in September of 2024. We know the cliff is coming, and when IDEA was authorized, it was authorized at 20%. They've never even reached half of that funding-wise, so I think we're about 13% to 15% now, and we were just asking them to kind of fully fund what they had authorized years ago. And then the other thing we were asking for was around Wi-Fi and broadband and the E-rate to make sure that we have connectivity for all our students, especially our rural students, that there's not a disparity between our children that live in the city and our children that don't live in the city, that they have access to a high-quality education because that's what every student deserves. And I do want to shout out to the staff because when we were talking about shutting down the government, I needed numbers, and I needed them very quick on what it would, what it would mean to us if they were to be shut down for more than 30 days, and it was a very large, it was like $11 million. So thank you, Doreen and her staff, because they were very quick in providing me with those numbers so that I could give real factual data to our congressmen and our senators, and I do believe that that helped. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Member Caster Dennell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have a committee report, but I do have an update I would like to share. We had a few meetings back, we had a lot of bus drivers who came and spoke about some of the concerns that they had with their routes. And in one of those meetings, I offered to go on a ride-along to see what it was like, and I did, I went last week on a ride-along in the afternoon. I could not go to the morning run because they start at 5:00. So...
Why not?
But I, so I rode the afternoon routes, starting at the bus compound, and I did the Evans High School, Robins Wood, and, oh my gosh. Not Mattlebrook. It was a long day. It was a long afternoon, but I have to tell you, I was able to ride on one of our new electric buses. So it was very quiet and smooth, and you do have to be specially trained to drive those. So I asked, what happens when the bus driver is not there? And they have to get someone else who is specifically trained for the electric buses. But I want to give a shout out to Ms. Cotton. She was the bus driver, and the monitor was Ms. Fonda, and they could not have been more professional and caring. Every student that got on the bus, they knew every student, and they were, they helped them, they gave them reminders, they helped the little ones get up. I forgot how steep those stairs are on the bus. I needed help getting up, so... But I learned a lot about the challenges, and one of the things that I didn't realize, because I rode the bus a long time ago, and they didn't have Dispatch in your ear. So Dispatch is an amazing group of people who are tracking children who may have gone home early and they didn't notify their sister. The sister is telling the bus driver, my sister's not on the bus, where are they? So they go through lots of phone calls, they call the school, they call parents, and they're helping, and everyone has to listen to everyone's situation because you don't know if they're going to have to call your bus and say, we need you to go by this school and pick up this child. And it is a logistical magic show how they get every child home safely by the end of the day. I was so impressed, and it is a long day, and they don't go home till about 6:00. But the way that they cooperate with one another, and there was one time when there was a road closure because there was an accident, and I heard the dispatcher explain to the bus drivers, make sure you go around here, and I had to stop actually for a parade. We had to sit on the bus. There was a homecoming parade that we weren't expecting, but we did get to see the whole court go by. But there are so many different things that happen on those buses, and it is a very professional job. I was so impressed. I can see why others might be hesitant because it is a, you do have to be very skilled, you do have to have patience, and you do have to, you have to be so alert to listen to what's going on on that dispatch. So kudos to everyone in that whole department. They could not have been more professional. And then I want to make another shout out. I received an email from Maitland Middle School. It was an email that they sent out to everybody and all the parents, and I love seeing those emails, but there was this one part in particular where the principal, Mr. Brown, took a picture of the custodial staff with the principal and assistant principals and highlighted them, and then shared that in the newsletter, talking about what a great team they were, but then went a step farther and provided them lunch, and they were able to... And they were able to eat that in the principal's conference room while the admin went and cleaned up the cafeteria.
Wow.
And I thought, what, what a simple gesture, but what a powerful one to say, I'm happy to do your job for even just a little bit while you take a break and we appreciate you. So I just wanted to thank the principal for demonstrating to the whole school and to the staff and to the custodians how much they are appreciated and valued. And I would love it if more schools and more principals did that one little gesture. So that's all I wanted to highlight. Thank you.
Member Kestrel Dental, thank you so much for bringing that to us. And you know, your comments though about the bus drivers and it being, taking a lot of skill, it also, they have such an impact on the students. So I think that's the rewarding part that overcomes all the other obstacles. Member Felder.
Yes, I can. Thank you. Well, in addition to what Board Member Kestrel Dental said about the bus drivers, I had an opportunity, I think Angie Gallow and I last year to drive those vicious buses. Baby, they're big. They're huge. That was wonderful. But what I want to share, I sent the pictures to Victor. Superintendent Vasquez joined me this week at Jones High School's, oh, it is there, at the coronation. And she just loved what she saw. The children and the students were so excited about having her there. And it was a wonderful, wonderful experience. And I just wanted to share, that's Jones High's homecoming, 2023. This is Jones High's homecoming, 1960. And this is what looks like, it's called the Tangerine Bowl, but this is really Capping World Stadium. And there's a cute little chubby girl in the center who is two and a half. Her name is Vicki Lane Felder.
Oh, my God.
So I'm going to present this picture and I thank the media department and Frank, who did the picture thing for me to get it right. Because this picture was taken in 1960. So Jones High will get a copy of this picture. And this is homecoming, 1960. Many of the people on this picture were former teachers of O C P S. Some of them have since died. And one lady that's in the bottom, I had breakfast with her this morning.
Oh, my God.
She's 80 years old. So we had breakfast together this morning. So I wanted to show you the 1960 homecoming and then the 2023 homecoming. Thank you so much.
Wow. Thank you, Member Felder. Wow, that's so cool. Member Salamanca.
Yeah, and I, you know, at the last board meeting, I invited my fellow board members to come and visit the new high school. And, you know, Member Felder and Vasquez did take me up on the offer. I know they went. I was sick, as you can tell by my voice, so I was not there. But it was, I still encourage you all to come out to look at the new design of our high schools. It's huge. It's really nice. And I'm really excited for it. But I know that there's pictures out there for that. I just thought about it. But yeah, I welcome you all to come and get on a golf cart.
Thank you, Member Salamanca. You don't have any pictures from 1960 with, share with you?
No. I don't.
Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do want, it is Mental Health Awareness Day across the country. And so I just, as someone who, family has been affected from mental health, I just want to say, take care of yourself today. Make sure you're being kind to yourself. Make sure you're being kind to others. And make sure that you do self-care because it's so important. We all get caught up, we're so busy, especially our teachers and our bus drivers and our paras. And they're all working so hard. And I know that it's been, it's been a hard start to the year with all the changes. And there's been massive changes. And so I just want to say on today, we hear you, we see you. And please just take care of yourself and be kind. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Member Salamanca.
Sorry, Chair, just, I had one last comment. But another one is, I do want to give kind of a big hug and thoughts and prayers to our families that might be impacted by the conflict in Israel and Palestine right now. I'm sure we have a population here in the district. And it's always a complex topic, but we know that it's never easy to see violence within our families and communities. And so I do want to make sure folks out there know that, you know, your school districts here, in the context of mental health resources, if folks need to talk, hopefully they have a resource to talk to them. And yeah, so I just, I wanted to acknowledge that in today's meeting.
Thank you, Member Salamanca. Before we adjourn, we have one item that I wanted to talk to the board about. We agreed to change the flow of our meeting at the last meeting. A couple of issues have come up in dialogue with the Superintendent. And what I would like to ask is if we could continue what we have right now a little bit longer and have a time when we can devote to that conversation. I know that it was, kind of came up at the end of the last meeting. And I'm not sure that everything was flushed out as well as it could be. And I think we all agreed that what we don't want to do is make a change and then make another change. So I would ask if we can postpone that decision and continue with the meetings we have for the next couple of meetings. And then what we will do is schedule a time that we can commit to have this discussion where everybody knows it's coming first. So if there's not objection from the board, we'll stay the course with what we have for a few more meetings. All right. Thank you. One other question that I have for the board. We had a discussion some time ago about communication from the public to board members. And there was agreement by the board at that time that even though some comments that we receive aren't always going to be positive, that we were all comfortable being elected officials, that we didn't need to be protected from those comments. And I, I know that there was some concern from the looks on people's faces about how I'm conducting the meetings. And I always want to know from the board if there's something I'm doing in terms of being a chair and how I run the meetings. I want to, you know, welcome the comments and the criticism as well. We don't get, for the public's benefit, we don't get to meet and have these conversations outside of the sunshine. So I just want to open that up to the board members on that or any other subject. Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My concern, and certainly I will do, I'm here to do the will of the board, is that not everyone understands the stance that the board members have, if that is the stance that you're okay with. And it could be perceived that we are, you know, allowing many times disrespectful comments. And it could be viewed that we are accepting of that. And while I am very understanding of individuals' different opinions and beliefs and believe that individuals have the right to do that, to have those opinions and beliefs, if we are espousing kindness and we're saying that we're treating others with respect, my concern is that people don't understand the stance that you have taken to accept such comments that may be perceived as disrespectful. So that's where my concern comes.
Thank you. Dr. Vasquez. Member Kestrel Dental.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have a concern right now that I would like to bring up, or I'm not sure if I will have one, but I would like to make another comment regarding one of the speakers. They asked about the role of FERPA and Title IX in regards to student privacy, student rights. And I'm, I'm not clear on the role or the weight of those federal laws and when it comes to our students and, and the balance of our state laws. And I would like to get some more clarification. I know that I'm not asking for it for now from our legal team, but I am curious. I don't think I've really fully understood the role of Title IX when it comes to our LGBTQ students and FERPA for medical privacy, personal privacy. So I'm curious about how those interact with our, with our current situation with our state laws and maybe school or board policies. And, there was another one. Policy I J L. And I know that we had a couple of different speakers talk about, one about whether we're interpreting or over complying with some of the state requirements in an effort to be extremely protective of our teachers. But another person mentioned that we need to send a reaffirming statement out to our teachers. And I think what we're asking for, or what the speakers are asking for, is more clarity for our employees. And I think that that's a valid request. Because the teachers I've spoken with still are unclear, even with the guidance that we've given them so far. I think there's still this area where they are being so overly compliant that it is invalidating our students' rights. So I think we need another explanation about how we balance those. Because we've got to find a way through this where we are protecting our employees and our students. And I, if there is an issue, then we need to figure out how we message that information and what we're going to do about it. Because if there is a problem, we need to then not just explain it to our employees and our families, but we need to push back somehow, somewhere. If there's a legal remedy, we need to look for it. So thank you.
Thank you, Member Kestrel Dental. Member Byrd.
Thank you, Chair. I, I don't necessarily have a comment on you handling the board meeting a certain way. I understand the Superintendent's concern. And I certainly want our meetings to be a place where we, you know, present kindness. So, so I can understand her concerns. But I also understand the fact that we're elected officials. So I don't really have an answer for you on that one. I'm sorry. But I just, I had a couple of things I wanted to go over real fast. I 100% agree with Member Kestrel Dental about that I think we have to get some clarity. And we spoke actually about that several months ago, that we have to come down somehow. And I know that it's difficult because the laws are so vague and we're doing our best. And the legal team is doing a great job in that area. But I think it, there's still just, there's still some gray. And I think that we as board members need to sit down and discuss some of these issues a little further, a little deeper, and make up our minds where we want this district to land on these things. Because I think, I think there are some places where the comments that we're hearing are accurate. And I have a huge concern still with the pronoun usage and the way we're advising staff about that. And I understand the reasoning behind it. But I, I think that, I firmly believe that if a parent says, this is how my child identifies, and a teacher does not have a problem with it, that there is no reason why that teacher is not to be using that pronoun regardless. So I, I have some serious problems with that. So I really think we need to address it as a board and discuss it so that we can really nail that down and get some more clarity for our staff. And the book challenges, and this is a question that was brought up about the concern that a phone call can be made because of the memo last week. And I need to go back, and I wrote down to go back and reread the policy. But I, I thought I, that all book challenges had to have a form filled out. No one can just call a principal. And so that memo last week did not give that impression, right? Can we get a little bit of clarity on that, just to make sure that we're still following that procedure, correct?
Mr. Paul Marini can speak to it.
Yes, ma'am. We absolutely have to have a form filled out. And just as you remember, under our policy I J L, it is a multi-step process. So parent, guardian, resident of the county, school board member who has an issue with a book will fill out the form and then will have an informal meeting with the principal. And the principal can then make a decision, okay, is this book appropriately in the library or not appropriately in the library? If, that could, that could end it right there. If the principal gets the complaint from the parent and says, yeah, this shouldn't be in the library, it's done. If it goes beyond that, then we have a school literacy council where that form will, has already been filled out. It goes to school literacy council. You appoint various folks that are, that are listed in the policy for, to serve on that council. They will read the book, make a decision. If the person who has challenged the book is unhappy with it after that, there is the district literacy council. Same process essentially as the school literacy council. If the person is unhappy with the decision, the district literacy council then comes to this board for a final decision. But no, you cannot just make a phone call and have a book removed. It is, there has to be a written record and it has to be a written complaint. And there is a form that the state has just promulgated and put out. We're going to integrate that into our form because we are required by the statute to use the state-developed form.
I just wanted to give the opportunity for the Superintendent to have staff address an issue that is gotten, that is going to be on the news. And that is overcrowding on buses, which we know we have an issue with. And but particularly since we're talking about bus safety, I think it's very fitting that this came up today. There are some pictures taken of a high school route where kids are, you know, like crowded and sitting in the aisle. And, and so I had addressed this with the Superintendent and we talked today. And I talked to Mr. Pacheco and he assured me that, that this is not the practice. And so I'm going to let the Superintendent just talk on that for a second.
May I?
Please. Thank you. Whenever there is an allegation of unsafe behavior, whether it's a fight, whether it's children overcrowded on a bus or sitting on the floor, we pull the video and staff reviews the video and then action is taken based on that. Mr. Pacheco is here and can give further detail regarding the process that we follow. I do know that in, in some cases, buses are running late. But what we have found is that in almost every one of the circumstances where we have been apprised of a bus that's overcrowded, students have chosen to move from where they were sitting or that you would, might see open seats in the back. And in the cases where there has been an unsafe situation, we have addressed it through professional standards. But Mr. Pacheco, you may please add to my comments.
Superintendent, Chair, Board Members, yes, you are correct. Pretty much that's what we normally do in these cases. When we heard about the situation that it was raised on this specific route, we were able to look at the footage of the, of, of the bus to make sure that it was not an unsafe situation. No matter what happened. Normally what happened is that the bus driver is not to take off or continue on the route if they believe to be students on the aisle or they're not on a seat. However, when they get going, at times, like the pictures that we saw in the specific bus, the kid was almost kind of in the aisle but also on the seat, which of course is not the most optimal situation. As well, some of our buses, mainly on the high school, they're dealing with the double backs. So kids at times, if they miss the first tier or with the first time that the bus goes out, sometimes they get on the second bus, and that's what it creates, a little bit of the need of having three kids per bus proceed. For high schools, what we do is that we do route for two kids proceed, but at times we find ourselves having to do three kids proceed, which is allowable in the standards of the bus. However, they understand that is not as comfortable as it can be for a high school student. But again, this one is, is one of those results that happened from having the chores of buses in the afternoon. And I do appreciate Board Member Castor Dental, what you mentioned, because he has been on that room with those dispatchers, and literally they're trying to cover all those routes in a moment's notice because of an absence or unexpected signals of one of our bus drivers. But that's how we pretty much just add to what the superintendent has stated. We do follow through on it. We make sure that it is safe for them to continue on the route. I'll be remiss not to also say the amazing job that our bus drivers do on a daily basis. Like you stated, their day starts at 5:00 in the morning and ends at 6:00 in the afternoon. And even on Fridays, when they have sports events, even go past that. And also all those other support staff that are at the central office, that help mechanics and everybody else, like the dispatcher. So they do an amazing job based on the situation that we're going through.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. And it really is a situation that we are going to continue to have to deal with in the near future with the shortage of drivers that we have. But I know how hard they're working and how, how much they know, how much they understand that getting kids to and from school is critical. Without that, the learning can't take place. And the enormous effort that they have taken and continue to take as a team to be able to pull it off under these very stark circumstances. But we will always put safety first. So if you do hear, if any board member hears of a potentially unsafe situation, please let us know. We do investigate it right away.
Thank you, Superintendent. Member Salamanca.
Thank you, Chair. In response to your question and to Dr. Vasquez's concern as well, we're elected officials, and the public has a right to hold us accountable. So I still stand on, you could come up here and say my name or not, like whatever they want. Obviously, I think we, you try your best to have the tone be not aggressive or to get out of hand. We also have a lot of staff around here to make sure it doesn't get out of hand. My suggestion would be that we have some language in our script that before we open to public comment, we reiterate that this board feels comfortable, and every member on this board has said, "You can name us by name," so that the public who is here on that day can hear that before we go into that. Because I agree, I have gotten emails personally of people saying that I am bullying peer board members and that other folks in the audience are bullying board members and just by, because we say their name or because we're addressing them directly. And we kind of all agree that that was okay. So I do think it is worth clarifying to the public, the way that we clarify, like no clapping, no noise. Maybe we just amend it in the script so that it's very clear to everyone who shows up every day. And, you know, there'll always be misrepresentation no matter what, but I think if, we could just amend that. But I feel very uncomfortable with not letting the public address me by name or directly as an elected official. It doesn't quite sit right with me.
Thank you, Member Salamanca. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to circle back to a few things that my fellow board members mentioned. I think part of the problem on, with the books pertaining to the books is in the memo that we sent out, like on October 5th, because it says, "If a principal decided not to remove the book and the book challenger files the request for reconsideration of the media center materials or other reading materials formed, the principal then must ensure the school level literacy council is formed." So it reads as if, if the principal decided, that the principal has the authority to remove or keep a book, and only if it's challenged does it go through the literacy council. So I think that that's confusing because I don't believe that that's the way that our policy reads, if I'm not mistaken.
Dr. Vasquez, you're recognized.
And I'll defer to staff, but a media specialist who has been trained can look and review the book and decide that it's not appropriate, and it doesn't go through that form of challenge. Isn't that correct, Mr. Palmieri? So in that situation, and we maybe should, could clarify, the principal, and I know in this particular, well, I know the most recent situation, our staff, Dr. Brown Cannon and her team worked with the principal of the school. It was a formal request. It was done in writing. Then that book was given to the media specialist. The media specialist reviewed it, then shared their recommendation based on the training that they had taken. And at that point, then the principal said, "Yes, the book needed to be removed." So that is the process that we have, and we can certainly clarify by letting them know that it's not the principal that makes that decision, that the media specialist is consulted, and then, since they have been trained, they make the recommendation to the principal.
And we're keeping a clearinghouse of all the books that we're removing based on content, so it's transparent to...
Yes, we are.
Thank you. And then I want to, and I get confused, so just to circle back for the books before I move on. Like, I know the policy, we created the policy, and there's so many kind of moving parts at times. I get confused about what we're doing. And I know that the law changed, and so some of the policies changes. But if I can, I can imagine if I'm confused, we have staff members that are confused, so any clarity that we could provide would be, would be absolutely beneficial.
I don't believe the confusion lies with the staff, but we certainly can. We have our team that is, that works day in and day out with our media specialist and our principals. And the, we clarify that all of the challenges must go through the form. And we clarified in the policy that it's everyone that needs to do that. And I think that was the, what was most confusing, because if there was someone, even if it was myself, that would call and say, "Is this book on our shelves?" They really didn't know what to do. And so by clarifying the process that any individual that wants to make that challenge has to do it in writing, we have a paper trail. And then at the school level, they have been trained. And they, from my understanding, is that our team is also available to clarify and provide any type of support.
Thank you. And then I do want to circle back to what Member Castor Dental mentioned and what Member Byrd mentioned. I too would love some guidance on the Title IX and FERPA in regards to our LGBTQ+ because I know I've had conversations with several people, and I get conflicting, conflicting information, which then further concern, or further confuses me. So any guidance on that would be great. I agree with Member Byrd on the pronouns. I was, we were at, we were in Gainesville for an FSBA conference, and I asked two fellow board members in other districts, conservative districts, and their interpretation of the law varied from our interpretation. And they were allowing teachers who chose to, where we had it in writing, that the parent wanted that pronoun used, they were telling the teachers, "Yes, go ahead and use the pronoun." And this was two conservative districts, more conservative than Orange County. And so I would like to kind of revisit that because I think, I think we have an obligation to make sure that we get this right. And if they're interpreting it differently than we are, I know that they care about their teachers just as much as we care about our teachers. They wouldn't want their teachers in trouble any more than we want our teachers in trouble. And they've come to a different conclusion than we have. So I would love to maybe have a further discussion about that. I know that we sent an email to the Department of Education, and we have not heard back. Hopefully, we will hear back and we will get guidance. But I do think that this, we need to have a further conversation to make sure, as Karen eloquently put, that we're finding a way through this, and as we find a way through this, that we don't hurt children in the process while we still are adhering to the laws that we're bound to as constitutional officers. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gallo. Following up on that, I agree with the comments that you've made, Member Byrd, Member Castor Dental, in terms of the need to do everything we can to get clarity. I agree on the pronoun issue. I can see the argument in the statute for why one would say we can't, but I see another argument for why we can. And then I think at the, at the heart of the matter, it, it just, I can't come to terms with parental rights and student rights and why someone can't ask to have their preferred pronoun and why an employee can't agree to if they want to. I just, just doesn't make, doesn't make any sense. But then some of the language in the statute that required us to adopt into policy, the language about it being a falsehood to ascribe a different pronoun, and it would be a falsehood to ascribe a different sex than, or gender than you were born with. Also, I know we adopted it. I know we have to have it in there. If we have a chance, I would like to go back and put a qualifier in because when the state requires you to adopt something that you don't necessarily believe to be true, I understand we might have to do it, but I still think, I would feel more comfortable if it was very clear that this is what the state has stated as opposed to this is, this board's or this district's belief systems. Because I think that gets pretty, I don't, I think it sends the wrong message to our students and our staff. And to the gentleman, I'm going to get your name wrong, I swear, Quinn, let's go with that. Quinn, a couple of things. We did just at our last meeting, you know, attempt to publicly reaffirm our commitment to all of our employees and all of our students, and separately and specifically to our LGBTQ+ population. In terms of doubling down on bullying, absolutely, that's been a priority to the superintendent. It's part of a committee that she put together of people outside of the district to work together on that. Extremely important, and I completely agree. Single user bathrooms, it's something that the board and the district is very serious about. We are tasking the consultants that build and design our new schools to present to us prototypes that will allow for, as much as possible, most of our bathrooms to allow students to use whichever bathroom they want. There are certain standards that you have to meet. So that's a direction that we're moving forward with those who bid for contracts. In terms of our existing schools, I would have to defer to the superintendent and facilities. I don't know if you have an answer on that, but I do know it's been a priority. So let me turn to you on that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The facilities team has been undergoing a review of every single high school and how many restrooms are available. There are requirements to be met by SREF that we have to have a certain number of restrooms gender and, by gender. They have also identified in the schools, I believe they're almost finished, I think there might be just two more high schools that are left, any bathrooms over the requirement from SREF that can be gender neutral, that could be used by any individual. And so that's in the process. The other piece that they are doing is that then they are also looking for spaces that might be adjacent to a water source that could be converted into a unisex restroom. And once they identify that, they'll bring the cost to the board, and we'll be able to move based on that direction. But we have to meet SREF requirements, and then beyond that, we're working with those that have, that are in excess to be able to make them gender neutral.
Thank you. Okay, let me call on Member Castor Dental. Member Castor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to add some comments to the discussion in different areas. When it comes to members of the public addressing the board individually or as a whole, I think it's important that the public in this forum is allowed to do that. And I know we want it to be civil. And I think that we might be misinterpreting people's raw emotion for incivility. And I don't think that it's, I don't think it's fair to ask people to come and talk to us about something that's important to them and yet hide their emotions about it. Because for some people who come and speak, it is so raw, and their emotions are so strong, and they're hurt. And we need to hear that.
That's right.
And if they speak a little louder, I hear them. If I hear the anger in their voice, that makes a difference. I receive that message differently. And if they're, if they whisper their message, I hear that differently. It communicates more than just being civil and stating it factually. So I don't have a problem with that. I want to know how they're feeling, too. I have a question about book weeding. When they, when it goes through the librarian or the media specialist's process of looking at a book based on the training that they received, and they are making that decision about whether that book remains on the shelves or not. I know that there's a listing where it says, you know, "This title was removed or weeded by the media specialist on this date," but it doesn't say why. I wonder if there's a way that we can add another column or an explanation, whether it's, "This reason was because we've had it since 2002 and no one's checked it out." Or, you know, "That's a worthwhile reason." Or, "We bought this book just last year, and we're going to weed it now." What's the reason? I want to know. Is there a character they don't like? Is there a gay character? I'd like to know a little bit more about that decision. And I know, maybe it's their training and their erring on the side of caution. I'd like to know that, because I've seen the book, the list of books that the high school media specialists have had to go through and weed, and that's, that's a normal process, I understand, when you're culling the books and figuring out what new books to put on the shelves. But I want to know that decision-making process, since they're given that responsibility, and it's not going through that process where someone else complained about it and gave us what their concern was. So I don't want to burden or overburden our media specialists, but if there is a book that they deem should be removed, I'd like to know their rationale. And then, I really, just getting back to the pronoun usage, and why this even became a law is beyond me. How you can legislate a... How you can legislate a pronoun is so ridiculous. We have so many things that are going on. Our insurance rates are sky high. They don't address that. That affects everybody. But let's pick on the kids who want to use a different pronoun because that's who they are, who they identify as. And it doesn't cost anybody anything to respect a child's wish, with their parents' permission even, to go by a she, or a he, or a they. It's not a big deal to the adults. It is everything to that child. This is just such a culture of governing by fear. That is not leadership. It is cruel, and I'm just going to keep saying it. Even if nothing changes, I think we need to at least make a statement in opposition to unjust laws that are just meant to be cruel. What other reason is there? I think that's all I've got. Thank you.
Member Ferrant.
I do agree with the book list. I actually had requested that this past week. And I too had questioned why there wasn't a column. I think that it's really simple to do. Maybe we can even just create like a dropdown where there's six or seven options, like you were saying, how maybe it's just been in the library for quite a long time and children aren't checking that out. Maybe it has sexually explicit content, it's pornographic, whatever those dropdowns might be. I was looking at one from Indian River, and that's the way that they do it. And I could share that with the team as well. And it's just a quick dropdown and they, they select those items. As far as people coming, I mean, I believe we're pretty much speaking about me. So it doesn't bother me. It's, it is what it is. I was elected and I understand that there's people who maybe didn't vote for me and don't agree with the way that, the things that I've shared or the way I would like to protect children in our schools. And it is what it is. And if they want to come and say what they want, they have every right. The same way that when I was a parent and I was completely frustrated that this board had masked our children and were not listening to parent rights and could have cared less that my kids were dealing with mental health issues because of the masks, I too was frustrated. And I too voiced my opinion. And I don't know that I called people out by name, but I was very frustrated as well as hundreds of other parents. And so I have no problems with that. I'm an elected official and it's a part of the job. Knocked on 7,000 doors and this is part of, part of the job, so.
Thank you, Member Salamanca.
Thank you, Chair. And I just want to, I want to echo the whole, the pronoun stuff on. It's, I just want to understand what other districts are doing. I understand that we're not like other districts. We look a certain way. But I, I think it's just worth us trying to get as much information and inform our teachers and know what we can protect. That the second thing is, you know, is addressing kind of the civility part of it. We have folks on this board that don't have civility about our own kids and our own families and the way that they address them and the way to discuss. I mean, I sit next to them and they compare my community to the BDSM community, which is kind of outrageous. And so I, it's, you know, I'm an elected official. It's okay, I can turn the other cheek. I can listen to the staff. I'm, you know, ran for office so that I could represent folks and speak for them. But it is incredibly damaging for our families and students to hear those language when they go home. I did recently have someone very close to me, student in the district, who was being bullied because they had long hair. And they identified as male, but they had long hair and all these students were coming to them, asking them like, are you a boy or are you a girl? And, and there's this coal tree being built up because they hear adults talk about these issues and such disregard for the humanness of our students and the humanity behind it, that it has trickle effects. Folks think that they're protecting our children, but they're not. They're, they're making it worse. And we did have a speaker up here that said, we have bullies up here on this board. And we do have bullies up on this board. It's just the reality. And yeah, I think we try to keep things safe, but I don't really know how to define civility when, yeah, my people, my community are being compared to BDSM, which is just like completely uneducated. And, you know, maybe I have to sit through it because I ran for office, but our students and families did not run for office and they don't have to sit through it. So that's kind of my take on, on that. They just tell people that they can call us by name and they can do whatever. I'll also say that as, as this rhetoric continues to increase and double down, like, I am getting more emails saying that I'm the bully or that I'm the one that's wrong for being who I am. And that's not easy either because I'm not, I'm not here imposing myself on others or my beliefs. And so I think it's just good for folks to know that your words matter up here and it matters for us to just talk about it because students are listening and they're taking this into the classroom. And bullying is a real issue and it's getting worse every day because our students, because of their hair, because of how they look, or because they wear a certain color. And it's wild because some of the stuff that we had made so much progress off, it's like we almost went back again. Like some of the stuff that I experienced in school when I was, you know, trying to come out, it's back. And I think as some statistics said, home is not, to be assumed, a safe place for all LGBTQ community. And it's even worse when you go to school and then you're being asked like why you're wearing this, or why that color, or why that hair. So yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Salamanca. You're not the only one being called a bully. Just makes you feel any better. Getting a lot of that right now. Superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few comments. I believe that Board Member Salamanca's suggestion of making a comment prior to the speakers because the emails that we are, some of us are getting are implying that we are allowing inappropriate behavior or bullying, that term has been used. And I certainly agree that the emotion that this, that this or other topics can stir within individuals because it's personal, can have someone come across louder or more aggressive, but it is a reaction to their, you know, it's personal. So I think that would, would help in just ensuring people understand this is what we've signed up for and we're not being disrespectful. As it relates to the books, there's currently no functionality within Destiny, the system that we use to indicate that. But staff has texted me that they will reach out to Destiny to see if that is something that they can add. And if they can, then we will, we will be able to train on how to add that feature or how to use that feature. So I believe that may be a possibility. And then lastly, I believe the chair mentioned that we have reached out to DOE for clarification on the pronouns. The board knows very well, our district gets called on quite a bit where other districts may have different practices than we do. And it's our teachers, it's our principals, it's our staff that then are put in a position where their certificate will be sanctioned. And I've had that conversation often. And certainly, the board can change the policy and we will follow your policy. But our intent in providing the guidance that we have is to protect our staff so that they are not in jeopardy of being in violation of the law and losing their certificate. Certainly, if a teacher chooses to not follow our guidance, they are able to do that because that happens in other situations. Not everybody follows all of our guidance. I really am hopeful that DOE will respond to our email requesting that clarification. Because I agree, if a parent gives permission that their child could be called a different name, the pronoun associated with that name should be used. Unfortunately, the legislation that was referred to earlier contradicts that. And I just, I just want us to ensure that we're not putting anyone in jeopardy of losing their certificate. It's a very difficult position to be in because we want to protect our children first and foremost. And I'm hopeful that we're going to be able to get some clearer direction so that we're all on the same page.
Thank you, Dr. Besquist. I think, I completely understand what you're saying. I think there may be an approach that we could take, that we, I think if we have an opportunity to get some clarification that board members want about FERPA and about Title IX and understanding the legal ramifications from a federal level and a state level, I think that will help us get more clarity on that issue. And at the same time, there may be another way we can communicate with the state to express our concerns and why we feel that the statute says two different things. And that approach may or may not be successful. But I think it's worth trying to be very clear about why we're asking for this and why we think that the law can be read in a way that would support it. And Ms. Farrell is always, she writes really good emails that go into a lot of, and bring up a lot of, of good points about overcomplying. But I, I'm not naive, not one bit naive about what the state could do and very well might do. I have never been in this environment in my 20 years plus in office. I have never been in an environment like this. So I, I do think that it's justified to have fear. And the fear is the fear of losing the teachers that we most need in the classroom. And the fear is the fear that we already have in the state that the people that we want in, in the classrooms are probably thinking really hard and long about whether they want to be in Florida at all. And that's really, really, that's very frightening to me. Very frightening to me. But anyway, that's enough pontificating. Vice Chair, you want to close this out?
I would be happy to. I just wanted to speak a little bit, I know, on the email, I know that we emailed them. Maybe we can send a more leading email saying, the board's interpretation of this policy is that if a teacher chooses to use the pronouns based on the parental approval, that the teacher can do so without any retaliation or sanctions. And then if they, and if they don't respond, we can take that as an affirmative.
Dr. Besquist?
I will, I'm here to serve at the will of the board.
Well, and you can also accentuate because we believe in parents' rights, do we not? I mean, if we really believe in parents' rights, then every parent's right should be honored, regardless of if you agree with it or not.
And Dr. Besquist, what I heard Vice Chair say wasn't what, it was what the board believes if we, and so I think we're not asking, okay.
Please don't misunderstand that what my beliefs are, they're not contrary. I believe the law is contradictory and I believe it was done intentionally. And I would just appreciate clarity on what we can and we can't do. And if we know we can't use the pronouns, then we should have that direction for everyone. And if we can use the pronouns, we should have that direction for everyone. It is incredibly disheartening as a superintendent when I know that giving direction that we believe doesn't violate the law, and we've had examples of that. And then being told, yes, it does violate the law, we interpret it to violate the law and this is what will happen. And so that is very real to me. And for our teachers, whether they're saying that to parents or not, that is a real concern that if they choose to use a pronoun, that it does not align with the pronoun of sex at birth, that someone in their class, a student might hear it, might tell their parent, the parent then writes or calls DOE, and then the phone call comes, that we understand that Ms. so-and-so made this statement, they used this pronoun, that's in violation of the law, we need to have, we need for you to investigate it. That is a very real scenario. And it's, it's hard when you're trying to do what's right for children or what you believe is right for children and the law is contrary to that. And so I'll reiterate, I am here to serve at the will of the board. If the board, you know, wants us to change the policy, we will do so. We'll go through that process. Or if the board wants us to reengage DOE for clarification, we will do that as well. I do know that in the past, sometimes we haven't gotten a response back. And then we are right where we are right now. I hope that our students who are out there understand that we, we are trying to protect them in a manner that does not jeopardize the very people in those classrooms that are trying to support them, that are trying to help them during this incredibly volatile time. And the same goes to our leaders in our schools who are placed in these situations where they too want to protect their teacher. And so if the teacher is coming to ask them, you know, the parent wants me to use this pronoun, what do I do? That principal is thinking twice what to tell that, that teacher. And it is just incredibly difficult for everyone involved. And I, I am just incredibly saddened that our students are in the middle of it because they, they shouldn't be, but they are.
Thank you, Dr. Besquist. I hope my comment didn't, it wasn't intended to, I know where, where you are and where your heart is. It's your belief about the law. That was what I was referring to and that we might put you in a situation where you have to represent the board and what the board's interpretation. Because I, I think there is another way to interpret it. I will admit that it is extremely, extremely gray. And that's why I think that the board would be right in wanting to have another communication. And, and honestly, if the state is not willing to tell us we're wrong, then I think we should let the state know in the absence of being told we're wrong, we will continue to believe we're right and act accordingly and at least try to force an answer. Vice Chair, you had the floor. I'm sorry. You're finished? Okay. Okay, on that, no further business to come before the board, then this meeting's adjourned. the board, then this meeting's adjourned.